Hello and welcome to GV Wire's Political Forum in conjunction with C Mac. For the next hour or so, we'll be talking with candidates for Fresno County Supervisor District 2, which roughly encompasses North Fresno and parts of Clovis. The election is March 5th, and if no candidate receives a majority of the vote, the top two will advance to the November 5th general election. I'm your host, David Taub, Senior Reporter with GV Wire. I'll be asking the questions, and these gentlemen here will be answering. There are no time limits, but I do ask that you keep responses relevant to the answers so we can move things along and then talk about as much as possible in the next hour. And I also ask, there's just one rule I have, you don't talk over each other, because that does no good for nobody. Now, if you have something that you want to respond to what somebody else said, just raise your hand, I'll get you to you, and we'll have a good forum for the next hour. Now, let me introduce the candidates. Steve Brando has been supervisor since 2019. He's seeking his second full term. He previously served as a Fresno City Council member. Gary Bretafeld is a two-term Fresno City Council member, and also served a term in the 1990s on the Fresno City Council. Paul Diktos is the elected Fresno County Assessor Quarter, and he's been holding that position since 2011. And Dion Bourdais is a social worker for Fresno County. This is his first time running for public office. All candidates have been invited. We have four here, and I'm very appreciative. And let's get right into it. We'll start with the supervisor. Listen, the relationship between the city and county has been contentious, to say the least. We've heard a lot of sniping on both sides from elected leaders and others. How would you assess the relationship between the city and county?
You know, it's certainly a lot of room for improvement. That's very historic. The, you know, some contention between the city of Fresno and Fresno County's always been a little sketchy. It certainly is now. Maybe, it might even be an all-time high, I don't know. Personally, I think it's because, you know, some council members want this job, and so when that happens, you have to make a few waves, right? And then I think there's some particular council members who have gone out of their way to criticize the county for their own political futures.
All right, Councilman Bretafeld, you're one of those city council members who want this job. You're on the other side of the fence. How do you see the city-county relationship?
First of all, I'm a three-term council member, not two.
Well, two, two terms, but okay.
The issue about the relationship, listen, has nothing to do with anybody running for office. This has been an ongoing issue a long time. There's an attitude at the county that is demeaning towards the city. We have a, we need a tax sharing agreement. They don't feel it's important to sit down with the city council or the mayor. In fact, they've been very demeaning to the mayor, Mayor Jerry Dyer. Now, he can share some of his experience sitting in a room with them. And when I get to the county, that's all going to change. There's going to be respect towards the city of Fresno, as well as towards all the cities that are in the county. We're going to get a tax sharing agreement done, and we will recognize that the city of Fresno is very, very important to the county of Fresno, that they have to work together in order to collaborate, in order to have development, in order to help with the homeless. They have a Department of Behavioral Health. We don't. We need the county's assistance in dealing with those kinds of issues, and that's all going to change when I get to the county.
Assessor Diktos, you know, Gary mentioned the tax sharing agreement. We're going to talk about that next. You are an elected member of a different department. What's your take on how the city and the county get along about this tax sharing agreement?
I'm a peacemaker. I like both the board and I like both the city council members. I don't want people to fight. The tax sharing agreement is an issue that has been there for a long time, and I discussed that in my interview with the Chamber of Commerce. Like, the county shares about, gets about 60%, you know, 73% or something, and the city gets 32%. The county is justified to get what they're getting, but there is room for improvement. And we are going to sit down and really work on this thing and talk about it. But I want to be a peacemaker. I don't want to go back to the argument, you know, the city is this, the county is that. The county is in charge of 15 cities. One of them is the city of Fresno, and the city of Fresno should not forget that.
All right, Dion, you're kind of the outsider on this, so what's your perspective about the city and the county and this tax sharing?
I think there are a lot of good points that can be made in many different aspects, and I think that my opponents brought up several of those. And I think the real thing that we have to remember, though, is that the city and the county need to work together in order for us, as a community, to be successful. And I think that nobody would disagree that there's an issue. I think at the end of the day, since this disagreement can't be decided by the parties themselves, perhaps we need to bring in other things, like empirical-based evidence. Why don't we look at the numbers as to who should get what percentage based on what? Perhaps maybe looking into maybe why urban sprawl is creating this deficit to where the county picks up the tab for the city or vice versa. I think there's a lot of ways to look at this, but to point fingers at each other's side, at the other side, is never going to come to a solution that is going to make any of us any better off.
All right, Steve, you've been supervisor since when the agreement expired in 2020. It's been three-plus years now. From your perspective, how come there's been no agreement? Why is this taking so long?
Well, there's, you know, so we have to go back and revisit that. So there's been a lot of comments already made, you know, in this introductory remarks. So the truth is, the city of Fresno was not interested in continuing the tax sharing agreement. They took a, they took a political stand and withdrew, okay? Different council members there at the time, some of them were the same, right? But the city of Fresno withdrew from that agreement, and they had their reasons to do it, right? And to Dion's point, Dion, both sides have their numbers, and there's a debate going on about the validity of those numbers, but nobody's just throwing things up in the air. Both sides have documentation that where they feel that proves their side. So the city of Fresno withdrew, they played a political stunt on the county, they thought the development community was going to side with the city. Unfortunately, the development community sided with Fresno County, and we've been abind ever since. We didn't start the fight, but it's ongoing. And by the way, I have had conversations with council members, I've had conversations with the mayor. At no time was I ever disrespectful. I just wanted to get that out there, right? So now there are certainly disagreements on what portions, what percentages should be taken in by the county and taken in by the city. I had to withdraw from that, from reaching out to council members and the mayor, because now we have two supervisors who we authorized to go to the city on our behalf and hold those conversations, and that's Supervisor Mendez and Supervisor Pacheco. So the way it works, I'm not involved in those conversations directly, but certainly when it comes to me, I am personally very open, and always been very open, in resolving the tax sharing agreement and in the timeframe, until we can resolve it permanently, to do one-off annexations for the city of Fresno.
So Councilman, is that acceptable, just keep on doing one-offs? What are the real-world consequences of not having this tax sharing arrangement?
Not having growth, not having the development take place that we need to have. You look at Madera, and they're growing by leaps and bounds, they're building their property tax base and sales tax base. It has a tremendous adverse impact on Fresno County and the city of Fresno. And for some reason, when council members who have been on the city council go to the county, something changes, and they forget the importance of the city of Fresno. I can assure you of this, he is right, they have their numbers, we have our numbers. When I go to the county, we are going to have a tax sharing agreement, we will sit down with the city of Fresno, and it will happen. The good old boy club that exists at the county, where they just march in the same place and they ignore the city of Fresno, is going to change, and we're going to respect the city of Fresno, along with all the cities in the county, and make sure that the needs that they have are going to be dealt with. So there will be a tax sharing agreement, there's going to be a need to be a change at the Board of Supervisors for that to happen, and that's coming March 5th.
And Assessor Diktos, I mean, you call yourself a peacemaker, how do you solve peace here?
As a professional accountant, I have seen these two bodies fight. As a result, we have had no tax sharing agreement, we had no general plan, the general plan has not been signed yet. For 20 years, they're still working on it. And we have lost a lot of jobs to the surrounding counties. Why? Because we do not have industrial land. So a lot of companies went to the, to the surrounding counties, and we lost thousands of jobs. And this cannot continue, because of the results we see. Now they are still, now they are still working on the, on the general plan, and they are hoping to get into the tax sharing agreement sometime later on. The numbers are there, but we have lost thousands of jobs in the surrounding counties. As a result, people cannot afford to buy houses, jobs are not here, there's no income coming in.
All right, you mentioned warehouses, industrial parks. That's been another point of contention of just getting these built, not only between the city and the county, but with environmental justice groups and lawsuits. So I'll start with you, Councilman, on this one. From a county perspective, how do you get these industrial parks built, and how do you get around the legal entanglements that are surely going to be there? Even Attorney General Rob Bonta has intervened, and how far are you willing to go in court to get these industrial parks built?
Well, you're right. We have environmental justice warriors that sue the city of Fresno, impeding the development that we need to have happen. It's an ongoing situation. They do have the Attorney General, who's also sided with them. That has impeded the ability to create these industrial parks, and we need industrial parks, just like we need residential development, just like we need a tax sharing agreement. And so these are the battles that we have, and you have to stand up. If you don't stand up, we're not going to get this industrial development to take place. At the same time, you also have to be sensitive to the impacts of these developments, and I always am, always will be. We don't want to cause problems for residents, but we have to build industrial parks, and so we will continue the efforts to do that.
Supervisor, where do you build these industrial parks? I know that kind of the area by '99 and '41 has been traditionally the industrial park zone, which has been a point of contention. Do you try to still build them there? Are there other parts of the county that they should be built?
Yeah, I want to answer, I want to get to that, but I want to address a few things that have been said. Not that I'm in total disagreement, but we were talking about the environmental justice group. Unfortunately, for the city of Fresno, you have environmental justice advocates on city council, right? So the problem is not somewhere else, somebody else. It sits there in that body, and it really hamstrings economic development. And I'm not talking about residential, now we just finished that, but I'm talking about industrial park development. So when I, and I was on the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation, when I was a council member, now as a supervisor, for six and a half years as a council member, Gary, I tried over and over and over again, and you can do it too, to find places in Fresno that fits everybody's need, and the environmental justice will give you the thumbs up. It's not happened, it never happened, it's not going to happen. That doesn't mean there can't be a couple of little one-offs, but little one-offs are not what's moving, you know, the economic conditions of our community, right? So when I became a supervisor, it took me about a year to get some of the, you know, find out where the restrooms were, and then I said, I'm going to get back to work on this economic development. So I suggested, I met with Leanne Eager and the EDC Board, and said, you know, where can we go? Let's look at this, let's open up the map. Does it have to be done in the city of Fresno? We took a look at some spots outside of the city of Fresno, in Fresno County, and we located three or four potential places. About just over a year ago, the Board of Supervisors committed a million dollars to a study. Right now, it's just a study. We have to pass the general plan, is what Paul talked about. We pass the general plan, that can potentially become more than a study. I believe, not, I believe that it's going to have to happen outside of the walls of the city of Fresno, because the debate happens on city council, and you have a number of council members that fall lockstep with the state Attorney General. Now, look, I've met with Rob Bonta on multiple occasions. I've given him my word that we're going to take his concerns, and we're going to deal with them. We're not going to try and skirt around him. And then I'm taking him at face value, when he says, if you conquer these concerns, then I can potentially be on board. All that work still needs to be done, but that's an example of working with somebody that he probably disagrees with many things that I stand for, but we have to get some movement in this space of economic development. I'm committed.
Mr. Bourdais, where do you think these industrial parks and these warehouses should go?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm kind of confused as to why the discussion doesn't revolve around plans that have already been proposed, such as I recently read about, there was a million, or a million square feet of industrial space that we were talking about opening up or potentially building on the west side of Fresno. There was some discussion, from what I understood, from a couple of different council members, about how this needed to be union-based work, which I can understand, but I think maybe that's the key, is we need to recognize a way to moderate and to balance the different needs of our community, both with, based on where we build these different industrial zones, but also who builds them, and under what conditions, and for what purpose. I think that's really the issue that we're facing within Fresno, is it's not forward-facing, it's not future-oriented, and there's no vision. We're sitting here talking about how the county, the county council and the supervisors can't get along. Well, you know, respect begets respect, and I think that's where we have to start, is by actually bringing in people and opening up the discussion to come to the solutions that we can really find by bringing in other parties in the discussion. All I'm hearing is about, well, we need to figure out whether it's in Fresno or not in Fresno. We have all this open area, we have all this urban sprawl that's occurring, but yet we have to figure out where we can build these? It doesn't really make a lot of sense, and I feel like it's a giant bait and switch.
All right, Assessor, we'll get to your perspective.
Well, as the assessor, when I see that there's no tax sharing agreement, there's no general plan, I see that there's no building going on. Last year, we had over 3,300 new parcels created, this year we are down to 1,800. That affects that, that affects the bottom line, that affects the income coming into the county. The county, the county has been in a deficit for the last eight years, nobody knows that, I know it, and I have a chart here to show it. We've been in a deficit since 2015, started out with $793,000.
Turn that around so we can see that, Paul.
I got to see what I'm reading. So, okay, I'm showing you this, so you can focus, we can zero into this. In 19, in 2015, the deficit was $793,000. In 2016, it was $793,000.
Paul, hold it a little lower, a little lower to your face.
And in 2018, it was $939,000, that's what I guess, I guess about a billion dollars. When I see those numbers going down, I'm worried, there's an accountant, a professional accountant, and it came down to 370,000. It goes all the way to 2022. Tomorrow, the Board of Supervisors will receive the cover, the financial statement for this year. If these losses continue, I'm going to ask Mr. Brando, you know, what do you plan to do to fix it? This is, this cannot continue.
All right, so Steve?
Okay, so here's where I want to go with that. I want to address some of Dion's statements, right? So he's located a million-square-foot location inside the city of Fresno. Let me tell you, the county, Fresno County is not in that, is not in the way, Dion, of the city of Fresno pulling that off. We would be very supportive. And there are locations where, by the way, a million square feet's not enough to move the needle, okay? So we're looking at an area that's 3,900 acres, okay? So I just wanted you to know, in, in all things being equal, Fresno County's fine with city of Fresno developing it, but you're going to find out what you've already found out, Dion, you've never even served there, but you're very observant, that the city of Fresno can't pull it off, and you even mentioned it's on council. The debate is on council, the people can't get their act together, even when it comes to jobs that would benefit the community. So my opinion is, after serving on the city council for six and a half years, coming to the board, I think it's going to have to go in unincorporated Fresno County. The plan as presented to us, after spending a million dollars, is potentially 40,000 jobs. Now, it'll take 12 years to build out, it's not an overnight deal, but at the Board of Supervisors, we're committed.
All right, and Councilman, no matter what you build, whether it's industrial, residential, retail, you need water. Does the county have enough water to build all these projects?
Well, I think that water obviously is vital to everyone in the city of Fresno, of course. We have our surface water treatment plants, and we've provided and planned for that for a long time. Now, there have been developments in the county where there hasn't been enough water. When you move out towards the Brighton Crest area, there's been all kinds of issues with water. I'm a person who always has believed in orderly growth, not leapfrog development, because of the very things that you're talking about, number one, and number two, you can't always provide the services if you jump and leapfrog. So water's always going to be a continual issue, an important issue for farming, agriculture, and of course, development.
Dion, are you satisfied that the water sources for development is out there?
No, reality, I've heard many different things from individual citizens and in different areas of our community, and the water table is lowering. We like to pretend that these are all future issues, but the reality is, is that that's why we have people in place, that's why we have leadership, is to not wait till there's the issue, but to actually lead by example and with vision. And, you know, I hear this talk about how we've done this study, and how we've decided, we figured out the plan. Well, you know, how long does that plan take? How many years do you need to succeed and to actually create this and effectuate this change that you keep talking about? And I think that that's exactly what the reasoning behind you finding so many different candidates running oppose this year, is because there is a dissatisfaction within our electorate for the jobs that our politicians are doing, and I think that that can be shown, just in the fact that we're talking about things like the water table, it should look good, it is good, but you know, we're not talking about, well, then why are the costs of our water services going up in the next few years? Why is our trash going up? We talk about how we've got everything, you know, everything's going great, but like Mr. Diktos was saying, we have a $4.8 billion budget with 7,000 employees with 1,400 vacancies, that's 20% almost, and yet we're talking about bringing 40,000 jobs to the Valley? Whereas right now, we have triple-digit in some places within the county of people not being able to retain their jobs and losing out on people. That means we're losing more people every year than actually come in. If we were to stop that today, it would take up to three years for us to completely remove all those vacancies with the county's positions, but yet we're going to somehow find 40,000 people to man these industrial positions. I think we're living in the clouds, and I think we need to come back down to reality, because the only way we're going to create actual change is by utilizing the tools that we have available and the resources, rather than thinking that, you know, we can make it sound good.
Assessor, are there, is there enough water for everybody, including the farmers? And you might know this the most, is there any, is there any risk of property, farm property values declining?
All I know is, David, I talked to one of the water lawyers at the local law firm, and they told me, Paul, never move out of Fresno, there's plenty of water in Fresno, because we are surrounded by mountains, and the water is really coming down. We have plenty of water underneath, and I don't know this game that they are playing, there's all water, yes, sometimes the water table goes down, but thankfully we got rains, because it goes down. But the reason we have leapfrog building, you know, development is because we do not have a tax sharing agreement.
Back to that.
Unless you have that, you're going to go here, and there, and there. If you have that, you could go, you know, continuously, orderly, you know, and the cost is cheaper. Now, when you go and build houses up at Freiant, okay, no plan or nothing. Now the county has to spend 30, 40 billion dollars to widen the street. I mean, they should have thought about it when they went there, who is going to pay for the street? So that's what happens, we don't have a tax sharing agreement. There's no order, there's no plan.
Supervisor, brief.
Anything, when you start talking about leapfrog development and what's happening in Madera County, A, that pre-exists the tax sharing problem by about a decade, okay? Riverstone was already in the ground before the city of Fresno pulled out of the tax sharing agreement. Rio Vista was already in the ground before the city of Fresno pulled out of the tax sharing agreement. You're going to see, if you, if you believe in this leapfrog development, when the city of Fresno makes it so difficult to do business and construct homes and businesses inside the city, you're going to see people fly to areas that open their arms and welcome. That's why people are crossing the river, they're building thousands of new homes in Riverstone. It's got nothing to do with the tax sharing agreement, it's got to do everything with how onerous the city of Fresno has made it to develop. And there are issues, but there's issues in these other counties. Madera County has water issues. Fresno County will have some water issues, but when it comes to the industrial development, the study area that we've been talking about, that area has water.
Now, I think one of the interesting storylines of this election is Supervisor Brando, Councilman Bretafeld. I think you guys were friends before, you guys have similar political views, similar political theories, yet you're running against each other, and it's been contentious among you. Your public comments, and even sometimes your private comments have been a little contentious. So, Councilman Bretafeld, I'll start with you. What motivated you to run for incumbent, somebody who used to be your friend, or maybe still is your friend?
Well, I had several options. I'm termed out on the city council, and I had a determination, do I want to continue to serve? Do I want to leave public life? I decided that I still have a passion for serving people. I've been serving people my whole life as a clinical psychologist for some 35 years, 27 years, helping veterans at the VA Hospital, I'm a veteran as well, and 11 years now serving on the city council. I had a choice to run for an MTC up at the Assembly, former, well, a current Assemblyman Patterson seat. The fact is, I've been married for 40 years, I love my wife, and I want to continue to see her. And having served, if you serve on the, in the Assembly, you have to be up there for eight months. I wasn't willing to do that, and I decided I still want to serve, and so I want to be local, this is my home, this is where I've been. I talked with Supervisor Brando, and I had to think long and hard about it, and I decided I want to stay here. And so I decided to run for supervisor. Now, the fact is, none of these seats belong to us. His seat doesn't belong to him because his rear end is sitting in it, and my seat doesn't belong because I'm sitting in it. We have to earn it, you have to go before the voters, and you have to prove to them that you deserve that seat. And based on my record, I think we're going to be successful. And he has an opportunity to decide, just like I did, does he run for that seat? Does he run for my seat? Does he run for the Assembly? We'll all have that choice. And so when I prayed about it, sat down with my family, and I decided I still want to serve, I want to serve local, and that's why I made the decision to run for supervisor.
Supervisor, you and your colleague here, you represent nearly the same area, you're both familiar names there, and like I said, you have similar political views. So how do you tell those people, your constituents, what's the difference between you and the councilman?
Oh, well, there's a dramatic difference between me and the councilman, and it's not in the way the votes are getting taken. My guess is if, at the end of our careers, if you tallied up all of our votes, where we voted on the same things, you would see a lot of similarity, both strong conservatives, right? It's the difference in the man, it's the difference in the type of person. If it's a difference in being able to talk to people, you know, Gary often calls the Board of Supervisors "the good old boys' club," and I think he mistakes the fact that we don't argue with each other, and sue each other, and call each other names like they do at Fresno City Council. He mistakes that, that we're all walking in homogeneous group. That's not true. I passed a Parents Matter Act late last year, the vote was three to two. But my, but the people who were dramatically differed from me on the viewpoint, they didn't call me a bunch of names, and some people can sit back and go, oh my gosh, they just all walk in lockstep. Couldn't be further from the truth. But I think Councilman Bretafeld mistakes that, that we're all "the good old boys' club." We think the same, we look the same, and all that. It's not true. So it really comes down to the difference of the man, being able to talk with people, work for people on the opposite side of the aisle, work with people like Rob Bonta, who Rob and I probably have wildly different viewpoints of what should be happening in the state of California, but I'm going to work with him and commit with him so that I can get this industrial park built.
Councilman, what do you say?
Yeah, I say there's a big difference, and here's the difference. It is a good old boy club, because they passed a $5 billion budget in 15 minutes in one public hearing, no public comment, it's all worked out behind the back room. During the dangerous COVID Reedley lab, all of them hid it for eight months, they're all in lockstep, they all knew at different times supposedly. So that's why it's a good old boy club, and I'm a different than him, because I'm a guy who stands up and fights for the constituents that I represent. And sometimes it's contentious, but I don't apologize for it. I'm always going to stand up. When I see things that are wrong at city council, I stand up and fight for it. When I see council members misusing credit cards and using mislash funds, I call a press conference and call it out. I'm always going to do that, and I'm going to bring the same fight to the county. And yes, it is a good old boy club, and I've just given you two examples of how that goes on. And after five years, not only does it become a good old boy club, they vest and it becomes a retirement club for them. That's all going to change come March 5th, and that's why they all don't want me there. That's why they sued me not to transfer money, to make sure I don't come there, because I'm going to disrupt the good old boy club. Now, there's going to be a guy who comes in there and represents the people, and stands up and fights for them, and I'm going to continue to do it, and I'm going to bring the same fight to the county. And if they want to work with me, and I want to work with them, we'll work together. But when I see this kind of stuff, hiding Chinese labs, working deals out on a $5 billion budget, when the city of Fresno spends a month going through their budget, things are going to be changing when I go to the county, and they know it.
Mr. Bourdais, so quickly, your perspective.
You know, I have my unique perspective and individual perspective, but I'm wondering what Bretafeld finds the difference between the fact that the ACLU is suing the Fresno City Council for doing their budget behind closed doors, and how that's different from what he's claiming is going on in the Board of County Supervisors.
No, I agree with that. That shouldn't have been happening.
What action did you take?
I'm sorry?
What action did you take to change that?
The budget, the subcommittee has been disbanded and we're addressing it. That's the action. Now, I wasn't on, I didn't serve on that subcommittee, so I wasn't part of that.
Didn't have the power to change it?
It's been changed. It's been disbanded and it shouldn't have been going on. But honestly, I think those folks did not think they were doing anything wrong or violating the bracket. They were moving forward and working the process through. But I think it was done incorrectly. I think people have acknowledged it. That's why it's been disbanded. And so when something like that happens, it needs to be open and transparent and it needs to be recognized and it has been. And that's why it's going to change. And that is not exactly what happened with the Chinese lab for nine months at the county.
Right, I'm glad you brought that up. So let's move on to the Chinese lab. Assessor, I want to get your thoughts. When you hear this lab going on, do you think the county handled this correctly from just the actual lab to being open and transparent with the public? How do you think they handled it?
Yes, it did. Talking to the people that are in charge, they took care of it. They were waiting, they were talking to the state, they couldn't just go out and really shut their mouths. But I tell you what, I love both of these guys. Both of them endorsed me at times, you know, and I loved them both and I love also Dion here. And the reason that I'm running, you didn't ask me, is because I saw that we are balancing the budget, we are just, we're not really balancing the budget. We are balancing the budget with vacancies. We have 1,400 vacancies and we keep having these vacancies and we are balancing the budget when we shouldn't, we are not even balanced, we have a deficit here. We balance the budget by inflating our revenues. Okay. And as a professional accountant, that's why I'm trying about to fix all those inadequate issues. I don't believe that this is true. This is good for the public. The public should really know what's going on. And as a professional accountant, I will disclose those things and I will make sure that I will be a watchdog for the average taxpayer.
Supervisor, Councilman Bretafeld says you did not handle the Reedley lab correctly. The assessor says you did. How do you, what's your assessment on how the Chinese Reedley lab was handled?
Well, for starters, you know, you always have problems. You have people, you have problems. Let's talk about the Reedley lab for a second. It was discovered in Reedley thanks to the good, hard work of Reedley staff and the city manager. It's discovered in Reedley. In Reedley, it was a warehouse. They were warehousing the stuff that they'd removed from Fresno. It was sitting there as a warehouse, right? As a lab, it was operating in the city of Fresno. In Reedley, a couple of months as a warehouse. In the city of Fresno, it was operating as a lab for years. And if the councilman keeps making claims like, well, why didn't the county do anything about it? Why did they be transparent? Why weren't they more transparent? I would have to call BS on that. When it was a lab, operating in a lab in Fresno, Fire Chief Kerry Donnis, in an email, said she had concerns about that lab. The council member didn't do anything about it.
Councilman, okay, finish and then I'll go.
The other council members, they didn't hold press conferences then. They only held a press conference when they could make political hay about it. Now, I happen to agree more with our assessor recorder, right? That I do believe that we handled it well. Did we handle it perfect? Do we handle anything perfect? Does government handle anything perfect, right? So could things have been improved? Yes, to this day, we still wish there were improvements out there. But from when we got the phone call, we got engaged, we, Public Health went out there, found out there was no imminent crisis, called in state partners, called in federal partners and started the process of evaluating what was going on the scene and diminishing any threat and then also beginning the process of cleanup. Now, the minute we called the state and the feds, there were some Keystone Cops going on. They would say one thing, we would want to do another. We would want to get in there aggressively. They would say, hold back. Okay? So that is, that's a problem in government when you have something like a lab that is running across different agencies, right? And you have, you know, different agencies supplying.
What's your firm?
So here's where the truth is not told. Kerry Donnis was aware of it. The problem was Kerry Donnis never told up the chain about it. So the city manager never knew, the mayor never knew, Gary Bretafeld was never told, no city councilman was ever told, but these guys were told. The elected officials were told at the county. And if I had been told about something like that going on, you damn right, I would have let the public know about it and I would have contacted. Reedley officials did the right thing. They contacted the right officials. The county officials did not tell the public. In fact, in April, four months after they were made aware of it, they came up with a press conference in case the public found out about it. Here's what we'll say. Of course, the public didn't find out about it until July. And that's when I found out about it and that's when I went to the public and said the public has a right to know what's going on with a Chinese COVID lab that we now find out was experimenting with Ebola. And Steve said it was a safe thing. It was all safe. And not only that, he called the people who were concerned about it, who shared my concern, sycophants. Well, that's pretty disgraceful. And so the elected officials at the city did not know about this lab. The county officials did and they hid it from the public.
Supervisor, just button this up right now. You responded to that in the question, when did you learn about it and did you feel a need to go to the public with this, to let the public know?
Okay, it's a great question. So I found out about it when many other people found out about it and wrote a story on it, right? Do I wish that was different? Yeah. In hindsight, Monday morning quarterbacking is a very easy game to play. And that's why I said, was it done perfectly? Was anything in government ever done perfectly? My opinion, no. So from when we found out about it, we, you know, now the departments, the departments were already engaged. Public Health was already out there doing their thing, working with Nicole Zeba and the city manager, the city of Reedley. But so, you know, there's a lot of hypocrisy going on here because if one of your claims is the county's not transparent, they but they pass their budget in 15 minutes, then why wasn't Kerry Donnis email come to Gary? Why didn't Kerry Donnis email come to the mayor? So, you know, that's.
It should have.
Exactly.
It should have.
Exactly. My point, right?
Let's hit on a high note to agree with you here. So let's move on. Assessor Recorder, Measure E will be on the March 5th ballot as well. It would raise the county sales tax one quarter percent for Fresno State. Where do you stand on Measure E?
I'm against it.
Why?
And I've been, we have enough taxes. This is one of the poorest counties in the, in the United States. We keep loading the people up, you know, loading the people up, another 1.4 billion dollars in the interest of that, you know, it's going to be a huge amount. I have been against it from the very beginning. As a businessman, when you're running an operation, you have to appreciate some of this building. You have to, you have to provide for the replacement of the building. You have to provide for the maintenance, you know? So when management was running the operations of the, of the state college all these years, they should have provided for the, for the replacement of the buildings. They should provide for the maintenance. Now they have a deferred maintenance, oh, we cannot handle it. That's mismanagement. This is basically a wrong way of, in fact, I call it scandalous, an accounting scandal, not to put aside money. We all put aside money for our, for our home, for our homes. If you, if you have a home, you want to put money aside just in case the, the air conditioner goes off, you know, you want to be ready in the summertime.
All right, so you're on E. Mr. Bordais, where are you on Measure E?
You know, I think Measure E is a great example of the disconnect that we have between what we actually need and what we get. In reality, it seems like a great option, you know, we can raise taxes a little bit and I, I actually prefer it compared to bond measures. I think that bond measures just place higher burdens on the future. But when I look at this, I definitely agree with Mr. Dictos. I think that this comes down to the fact that we lack foresight in many different forms of government. And, you know, we can say that, you know, whether we should pass the measure itself and whether or not it's a good thing, but I think it speaks to the real issue at hand and that we treat the symptoms rather than the issues. And so when it comes to this issue and the tax itself, I actually do believe that it can, it can be a benefit. When I compare it to bond measures, I think it has way more value. When it comes to whether or not I've made my decision or whether I think it's the best choice or whether there's better options.
Yes or no? Are you, where are you on Measure E?
At this time, my vote would be no, but that's also because I believe, just like Mr. Dictos, that I think we already have the system in place to generate revenue and it's about when we do need things to make sure that we utilize the resources we have in an effective and efficient way to get the outcome we're looking for.
Councilman?
I'm opposed to Measure E and I'm opposed to most taxes that come before me. I think we are overtaxed, we're overregulated. This state is one of the worst in the country in terms of taxation. We need to be reducing taxes, not adding to the tax burden. So I'm opposed to it.
Supervisor?
Yeah, as a strong conservative and somebody that came from the Tea Party, remember Tea and Tea Party stands for tax enough already. And although I feel like the university system has been left in the, in the rearview mirror by the state of California and I agree that there needs to be upgrades at our university system, I'm, I'm certainly not supporting Measure E. I've mentioned it on GB Wire multiple times. I've mentioned it on Power Talk, KMJ. I've made that view very public. At the same time, it's going to be on the ballot. It's going to be on the ballot in March and the citizens are going to have to decide.
All right, Assessor?
Yes.
You, Councilman Supervisor, you all served, you were elected officials during the pandemic. How do you think the county and the city, for that matter, handled pandemic issues in the last, you know, from 2020?
Well, I believe that Fresno County did a great job because, you know, they allowed us to really telework and we never missed a point, you know, we never missed a thing because we all, we kept working. And I personally came to the office once a day for an hour or two, but everybody who was not there, you know, was sort of teleworking at that the production has gone up. We were able to close the tax roll. Our tax roll has gone up by about 6% during that period, which, which is really a testament to the, to the workmanship and to the dedication of my staff. I took the tax roll at $57 billion when I came in and today it stands at $110 billion. There's plenty of money coming in, but we can do better. We need more production. We need more parcels to be, if there's no parcel, there's no taxes.
All right, Councilman, how do you think this county did during the pandemic and compared to how the city did?
The city did horrible. They shut down businesses. They created a snitch hotline if people weren't wearing masks. I was probably the only lone voice fighting all of the lockdowns, speaking out for kids being in, that needed to be in school. We held press conferences, we held rallies, they shut down businesses, they destroyed livelihoods and they kept the abortion mills open. The county likewise, I think, did an abysmal job because they didn't stand up and they didn't fight for the people. They may have been silent and opposed to it. They had a medical officer, Dr. Vora, who was, was like little Fauci in Fresno County. He spewed all the misinformation from Dr. Galey up in California and Dr. Fauci. These guys, the county Board of Supervisors are responsible for the Department of Public Health. He was not fired. He should have been fired. When I had press conferences, when I had rallies, I did not have any Board of Supervisors. I think they showed up one time and I shared with, with the supervisor that you need, this is a moment in time where we're witnessing tyranny, we're witnessing authoritarianism and you need to stand up. And it was really, at that time, they should have sued the state like other counties did to keep businesses open because what they did was unconstitutional, destroyed people's businesses, destroyed their lives, destroyed kids for two years and the county needed to have a strong position. There were three Republicans on there and they didn't sue the city. They're suing, sue the state. They're suing the state over a name change, so they have the guts to do that. But when it really counted, when you had to stand up against Newsom and his tyranny, they were silent. When you had Dr. Vora spouting terrible things that were destructive to people, he should have been fired and reined in. He was not.
Supervisor, a lot to respond to.
Yeah, yeah. And most of it's hyperbole, right? Especially in light of your question, comparing the city versus the county. Gary's already admitted that the city did a horrible job.
Terrible.
Terrible, right? And maybe if Gary had, was not constantly calling his council members' names and suing them and badgering them, maybe he could have got a little bit of his, his way on that, but it didn't happen.
Wouldn't happen.
In regards to the, in regards to the whole COVID situation. Look, it was a, it was a crisis and a lot of people were fearful for their lives. My dad went in the hospital. I was afraid I was going to lose my dad. Now, here's the deal. I never got vaccinated. I didn't believe that that was the right thing for me to do, but many members of our community wanted to get vaccinated. We made it available to them. Did we follow in lockstep with Newsom? No. Did we follow in lockstep with, with Dr. Vora? No. These guys all talked. They all talk, 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 talk. The county never enforced any of the stuff that was, that the city of Fresno did enforce. We were under an emergency declaration, but we didn't go out hunting for problems. We were under an emergency declaration, but we didn't shut down businesses. The city of Fresno can't claim any of that. Okay? So, you know, you have to go back to that time. I personally spoke, Gary actually knows this, we were there together. I spoke at three public rallies. One in front of City Hall, one at a business in North Fresno, one at a second business. Just last week, I did a ribbon cutting for a business that called me in tears three years ago saying, we're not going to survive. I jumped in and helped them survive. And so here, so, you know, we did a lot of great stuff during COVID. Now, I was not one of the followers of COVID. When the county of Fresno said, you know, we're going to sue Emmanuel School to bring them into alignment, I stood up, did a press conference and said, I'm not for that. And you know what? We turned, we turned the tide. But here's the thing, the county sat back, listened to the governor, listened to the public health officials, heard them talk, and then we went out and said, we're not going to force any of this stuff. People want to get vaccinated, we're going to do it. We're going to make them available. If people want to report what's going on in their family, we'll make them available, be as much help as we could to all of the citizens of Fresno County that hold different viewpoints about COVID. I myself was never caught up in the COVID scene. I haven't been vaccinated to this day and I think now there's a lot of people that think I wish that's the direction I would have chosen.
Councilman, a brief response will hear from Mr. Bordais.
The county is responsible for the Department of Public Health, which is related to COVID. The point man was Dr. Vora. They did not rein this guy in who spewed the same falsehoods that Fauci was spewing. That's a dereliction of duty. Kids were locked out of school for two years. Forget, there's one school he mentioned Emmanuel and they were terrific because they stood up for themselves. We needed people, leaders who were going to stand up for Fresno Unified Kids and Clovis Unified Kids. These guys were AWOL. I was standing there fighting with Mayor, former Mayor Alan Autry and others saying the kids need to be in school. I have a PhD, but you don't, you didn't need a PhD to understand. This was going to destroy kids. And the drug abuse went up, mental health issues went up and you're still struggling today. Dereliction of duty. It's not enough to just sit on your hands and say, we're okay, we're not shutting a business down. You have to fight for your constituents. They didn't, I did.
All right, Mr. Bordais, did the county get it right during pandemic?
You know, I think hindsight, we all recognize is 2020. And we can point the finger at things that were done right and things that were done wrong, but I think there's a couple of things we need to look at and take from this. One is that you saw exactly what the people that were elected did and whether it was right or wrong and whether you think that they did the best job or what they should have done based on the information they had at the time. I think it's also important to note that we still have tens of millions of dollars in COVID-related funds still sitting, not being utilized. And I find it really interesting, as I've pointed out several different times, that we're having a discussion about semantics that happened years ago rather than the actual issues that are facing Fresno County today and perpetually in the future. And so I don't believe that we got it right, but I also don't think we got it wrong. What I do believe though, is it's time to move forward and make Fresno a place where we can all succeed because it's our home, all of ours, not just the people that live in our districts.
All right, Dion, I'll start with you on this next one. Measure C is not going to be on the ballot this time around. It was on 2020, or the 2022 ballot failed. Measure C, of course, the sales tax for transportation issues. Did you support it and where do you see Measure C going forward? Because it probably will be brought back again, maybe not this election cycle, but perhaps in 2026. What needs to change for it to pass and do you believe it should pass?
I think sometimes we think emotionally rather than logically. And when it comes to taxes, it's a really emotionally charged issue. But the only way that we serve our community is, the only way we get things done is by having those tax dollars to be able to do that. And we can pass bond measures that pass the buck and kick the can down the road.
Right, but where are you on Measure C? Why do you think it failed and how, what changes would have to happen for it to succeed?
As I was saying, I think the reason it failed comes down to the fact that we talk As I was saying, I think the reason it failed comes down to the fact that we talk about things in an emotional context rather than a logical one, because all of us would agree that roads need to be fixed and that we need to take our time to do so. In fact, Mr. Brettafeld recently sent out a flyer that indicated that over the last six years since 2017, he's brought forth $15 million and made sure that that was spent on your roads. But what I find interesting is we're talking about a funding measure for a ballot measure, but yet $15 million is only two and a half million dollars a year. So if we're only putting two and a half million dollars into our roads, how can we possibly believe that we don't need to find other sources to create the revenue to be able to do so? I drive down the streets every day in Fresno, and I can tell you that with the exclusion of certain districts, it is absolutely atrocious. And the only way we're going to fix that is by actually recognizing that it's an issue and not just saying, oh, well, it's a tax.
Right, Councilman, Measure C, would you support it and what changes would have to happen for you to support?
Here's what has to happen, okay? Number one is always the public safety issue. The second thing that people want are they want their streets fixed. And in the city of Fresno, there's about a billion with a B of deferred maintenance for roads. So Measure C, if it is to be approved, has to be the focus on streets. It was before on highways, we obviously needed to build our highway system. The number one thing is it has to be in the neighborhoods, has to fix roads all through Fresno County, all through the city of Fresno, all through the other cities. I'm walking streets that haven't been touched in 40 years, four decades, three decades. That's unacceptable unless Measure C meets that need, that it's roads, that's the primary thing. I will not support it at that time. If it does, I will look to support it because people want their roads fixed. It's a tax that's existing, it'd be one that's extended, so people are already paying for it. Short of it being for roads, I will not support it. If it is focused on roads, then I will support it.
And Sessor, where were you in 2022 on Measure C and what changes would you like to see?
Measure C is vital to the economic development of our county because that money is being used as a matching ground. The state sees that we have a matching ground, so they double it or they triple it. We have over 3,000 miles of, of streets, you know, all over this, this county. We have over 8,000 or 10,000 bridges, you know, Calvert's and all those things, you know, those things are really in a bad shape. I'm talking to the public, to the building department, you know, to the public board's department, they say we are, we are deferred maintenance, you know, for years. It's not going to catch up. We are so behind, it's not finding, so we need Measure C. I'm for it.
Supervisor?
Measure C is dramatically needed in our community. I mean desperately. I've served on the Transportation Authority for 12 years now, 11 years now. As a councilman, again, now as a supervisor, I know all the good work that, that goes into that. Deon and I were talking before the forum started tonight, we both took 168 into downtown Fresno. You know, you remember not too long ago before 168 existed, these are the type of projects that Measure C has funded. It has allowed the city of Clovis to have exponential beautiful growth. And it's, I remember when you, they first built it, very little traffic. Now it's a traffic jam when we get, when we were coming downtown tonight. Two months ago, we did the grand opening of Veterans Boulevard, another fantastic thing. Just two nights ago, a constituent called me, said, I want a yard sign, I want one of your political yard signs. I said, yeah, I'll get that to you. I said, let me ask you, how is Measure C, I mean, how is Veterans Boulevard? Oh, that's fantastic. It's already alleviated a lot of traffic off of her name. Here's the problem. We also have a big problem at the interchange with 99 on Shaw Avenue. That is a, probably a $200 million fix. We are not, we need Measure C. We've got Central Avenue, American, North, I mean, we have a lot of interchanges that need work. And we need our local roads paved. Where I'm in agreement with is, and where I support Measure C, is that if it is a roads-centric tax. Now, the beautiful thing about Measure C, you tax it, you can leverage the tax. That's what, just so if, if listeners never knew this about Measure C, if we tax ourselves and we take $10 million and spend it on Veterans Boulevard, the federal government will say, okay, you guys are committed, we're going to take your 10, we're going to raise it 30. The state of California is going to find a way of helping us. We can't do that, but we'll do this. It's leveraging, it's a very powerful mechanism, right? I will support it if it's about continuing the focus on roads. Why did it fail in 2022? It failed in 22 because Republicans by and large said, nope, it's got too many other goofy bells and progressive whistles in there. And so we're not going to support it. If you look at the post-tax survey, it was shot down in North Fresno. That's because a lot of people think like me, it needs to be about roads. So if it comes, now here's the problem, David, they're still not talking to the Republicans. They're still talking to the progressives. How can we retool Measure C and, you know, bring forth all these bells and whistles? Now, I'm not opposed, you know, to just, everything has to be on my way. You're just not going to get that in the world that we live in. But I think the focus needs to be about roads, potholes. There's a program that allows flexibility by agency. The city of Fresno can spend more of its percentage on roads if it wants to, and I'm fine with all of that kind of stuff, but it'd have to be about roads for me to even touch it. Unfortunately, that's not where the conversation's going, and I'm very worried about it myself.
All right, we're going to pivot. Israel Hamas, I think no matter how you're going to answer this one, it's going to be controversial. It's just such a contentious issue. We saw in the county, they passed a resolution supporting Israel shortly after the October 7 terrorist attacks. In the city of Fresno, there's a lot of pressure from groups that want a ceasefire resolution. Now, Assessor Dictos, we'll start with you, because when the Palestinian flag was raised in the ceremony at Eaton Plaza, you were there, you spoke a little bit. Why don't you tell us why you attended that?
I was there as a peacemaker. I read Psalm 133 that only has three verses and that Psalm talks about living together in harmony. And I read from the Holy Quran, chapter three, verse 130, that says the very same thing. That's all I said as a peacemaker. Now, why should the county be bothered by separating across the world? Why should we, we should be worried about the potholes we have in the street. We should be worried about the budget and not worry about something that should be done by the US government. I have no, there's no reason that the city council should pass a resolution or the county should be involved. That's foreign policy. Are we going to make foreign policy here?
Councilman, you've been very outspoken on this issue. What do you think of the county supporting Israel in one of their resolutions and the calls for ceasefire?
Well, I did an op ed shortly after October 7. I said, we need in this country to, to have more clarity about this war. October 7, terrorists, brutal sociopaths came and killed 1,200 Israelis. Israel is our nation's ally in the Middle East. They, they have always been there for us, we need to be there for them. And I knew that shortly thereafter, as history proves, Israel would respond. Initially, people would be supportive, the media would then turn on them, and this kind of thing would be going on. Now, every Thursday, we have people who are coming now, very threatening, yelling, shouting, we're going to bring some decorum back to City Hall. They've threatened me, I don't care, I'm not intimidated at all. But the fact is, we need to support Israel, and we can't turn a blind eye simply because we're elected representatives of a city or a county or a state. Everything that happens in the world, everything that happens in the United States has an impact on us as representatives. And I think we need to maintain strength and acknowledge that Israel is our ally, they were attacked, and a terrorist group, Hamas, must be destroyed once and for all, always. And the reason why this continues to come up is because we have, every Thursday, they come to City Hall and they scream about Gaza, they hurl anti-Semitic comments, they attack myself, they attack Councilmember Karbasi, they attack the city council, and they demand that we give them a resolution for a ceasefire, which I don't believe is going to happen. And he's right, it's not going to change anything, but they come and we have to respond, we have to deal with it. They have a right to come, it's public comment, they can speak, but I'm not going to back, back down when people come and are threatening or mislead our city about what's happening in Israel. And so I stand up and speak up about it, and we'll continue to do that if they could keep coming.
Supervisor, the county actually did a resolution, and also not necessarily related to this, but also a resolution regarding what flags can fly on county flagpoles, just limited to the American and Californian flags. Why did you support this resolution and is there any other resolutions coming and what do you think about the flags?
Yeah, that's great. Well, here's what's funny, they were both my resolutions. Here's the reason I did a resolution to support Israel. They are, they have been an ally of the United States for decades, and not just an ally, but a friend. After we were attacked on 9/11, the very next day, they pronounced a day of mourning in Israel over the losses we suffered in the United States. They also instigated immediately a blood drive to help the first responders in New York, okay? Thirdly, months later, they erected in Jerusalem a monument with the names of all the people that were lost in America. These are the things a friend does when there's a crisis. So I wanted to reciprocate and say, we knew you were attacked by terrorists, and we want you to know that around the world, we see that, we recognize that, we support you, okay? That was my resolution, it passed. I'm going to talk about flags in just a second, but here's where I'm at on this deal about Israel and Gaza and what's going on over there. Because we get asked, can you do this? Can you support a resolution, a ceasefire agreement? Can you do this, do that and the other? Honestly, we're, my focus is on local issues. We've been talking about them all night. Measure C, you know, all these different issues, tax sharing agreement, that's where my focus is at. We don't have much to say about how that war gets worked out over there. But I will say this, David, that all of the death, the death of the 1,200 Israelis that were trying to enjoy a concert, and the preceding death, excuse me, the deaths after that that are happening today in Gaza, all of these deaths are not attributable to anybody other than Hamas, okay? And they're a terrorist organization, and until we get that right, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to interfere with Israel's right to defend itself.
All right, Mr. Bordeus, why conclude this one real quick?
I think I have a very unique perspective in a couple of different ways. I am a Jewish American, I was raised Jewish. And when I think of what it is to be a Jew in the United States of America, is I think it, I think of the stories of David and Goliath. I think of the stories of King Solomon and the baby. It's a story of underdogs. And there's a lot of emotion that I think comes into play when we talk about what's going on in Israel right now and, and the pain and suffering that's being experienced by all sides. I think the things we have to concentrate on are recognizing that, recognizing the plights of one group and the arguments of them do not have to be mutually exclusive. We can both support Israel's right to defend itself and the Palestinian people's right to self-determination. We don't have to make this an argument in which we point fingers at each other and draw lines. That's why I'm here today. That's why I'm running for supervisor in Fresno, California, because I believe that we are too often focused on the divisions and the things that make us separate and rather the things that bring us together. The reality is, I don't think there's one person that would disagree with what happened to Israel was absolutely horrific and unimaginably horrible in so many different contexts. I also, in the same way, don't imagine there's one person that can't relate to the plight of the Palestinian people and what they're going through, many of them not even involved in the conflict itself directly. So when it comes to this conflict, I have a lot of conflicting opinions. But the one thing that I do know is that you can't support the belief in one group's self-determination and dismiss the other in the same breath.
All right, Mr. Bordeus, we're almost out of time, so I'll let you have the first round of the concluding questions. Make your 30-second elevator pitch. Why should you be a supervisor and why should supervisor brand up be replaced?
I think the actions of our community, of the people in charge, speak for themselves. I was taught a long time ago by my family that charity belongs in the home first. But all too often, I think we think that our home ends at our front door. This entire city, the county, our state, our country is our home. And this is an opportunity for us to make a decision for the future of that community and what's better for them.
All right, Sessor, why are you the man?
I'm a different candidate of all these three, all these four people here. I came as an immigrant from Greece, I have $23 in my pocket. I was on welfare. I lived in the projects. I moved out of the projects. I got me a job. I went to school. I got a student loan and I paid it back with interest and everything. And I'm the most qualified because as a professional accountant, I'm going to have a lot of input as to what's happening financially in the county. As a professional accountant, I will watch, I'll be a watchdog over the budget, I will be a watchdog over the expenses, I'll be a watchdog over the vacancies, you know? How can we say, how can we say that we are balanced, that we have seven, 1400 vacancies?
All right. Sessor, thank you. Councilman?
Yeah, my, my life has been about service to people. For 27 years, I worked at the VA helping veterans, I'm a veteran. Also had a private practice as a clinical psychologist, served the Navy for three years, the proudest accomplishment aside from my family. In public life, now we've, we've got 900 police officers, the highest level ever, 375 firefighters in the city of Fresno, highest level ever. I focused on making our community safe and the, and the crime rates have shown they've been coming down. I've also been a very strong voice, unafraid to speak the truth that needs to be spoken, whether it's calling out corruption at the city of Fresno, which I've done, which by the way, because I have, it has stopped, or pushing to enact legislation to improve businesses. And don't be misled, I've worked very well with my colleagues, but I call out the nonsense that needs to be called out.
All right, too, sorry, we've got to move on, we're almost done. But Supervisor, why don't you have the last word? Why should you remain the job?